Consideration of presentation of the Lake County Quagga Muscle Prevention Program update. Director DeLeone? Oh, you can't talk. There you are.
There I go. Thank you Jake. Good afternoon Scott DeLeone. I'm pleased this afternoon to introduce Angela DePaul Madal. She's our invasive species program coordinator and she's going to be making the presentation today about our Quagga Muscle Program. In my opinion, this is the, this is a top priority program for, for our department. And Angela has been doing a great job of advancing the program through the use of grant funds. And she's going to talk about that today in her presentation. And, and so I will turn everything over to her and thank you again.
All right. Thank you for the introduction Scott. I am sharing my screen. Can you guys all see that?
We can see it just fine. Thank you.
Okay, great. So I'm going to present and I want to thank you guys so much for letting me have the time this afternoon to present about the very important Lake County invasive muscle prevention program. And I want to first start off with thanking our project funders and our supporters. So we do get grant funds for this program from the California State Parks Division of Boating and Waterways. And then we have project partners that support us from California Department of Fish and Wildlife, as well as the Pacific States Marine Fisheries Commission. And if anybody has any questions today, we have a lot of resources on our Facebook page. At Lake County Water, we have several videos and posts. And then as well as our website for this program is www.nomussels.com. And of course, that's spelled like muscles and not your, your, your arm, your bicep muscles. And I also want to take the time to plug a big thank you for our ramp monitors. So they are the meat and potatoes of this program. They are the ones that make it work so well. This is a photo of, photos of some of them, but there are a lot more out there. And our season started on March 7th last Sunday. And so they're out there on the ramps and they are the reason why this program works so well. And so I just wanted to acknowledge and thank each and every one of them. So this is the outline for today. It is going to be 30 minutes. We're going to go through a lot of information. And that's because I think it's been a while since we updated the board on this program. I think the last year that we brought this program to the board was in 2016. And if I'm not mistaken, I think that's about 100% or 80% board turnover since that time. So I think it's about time that we just get all on the same page. We talk about, you know, what the ecology is of muscles, where they came from, the basics of our program, the form, the function, as well as the impacts to our ecology and economy if we get these muscles. And then I'm going to touch a little bit on how we're improving the program and then what you guys can do to help. And this is both for the public as well as the Board of Supervisors. And I would like to keep questions and answers at the end of this. My presentation will be 30 minutes and then we'll have about 15 minutes, I believe, in the time for discussion and questions from you guys. Thank you. So we're going to start off with muscle ecology and we're going to be talking about quagga or zebra muscles. And I will be referring to them as quagga muscles, zebra muscles, or muscles or invasive muscles today. And this is a beach. This is a beach in Michigan. And this is after obviously a large population of zebra muscles have died and they all, all the shells washed up on the beach. So part of this program is to prevent Clear Lake shores from looking like this. And they are sharp and they hurt if you walk on them. So let's revisit the definition of invasive species. And this is US EPA definition. And this is a species that is not native and whose introduction causes or is likely to cause economic or environmental harm or harm to human health. So what this picture is showing here, this is a piece of dam infrastructure off the Colorado River. And you can imagine this is probably in that economic harm category. So these quagga muscles are encrusted on this infrastructure. And it takes a lot of effort to power wash them off with hot water and then actually scraping them. Also, you could argue that this would be a case of environmental harm. So if any of this defouling from these muscles accumulates to the point that that dam infrastructure no longer works, you might see some of that failure there and that could cause great environmental harm. And so these are the critters we're talking about today. On the left, you have the quagga muscle and on the right, you have the zebra muscle. They look a little different, but very similar. So if you see anything that looks like that out there, call me right away. Let's go investigate. And we don't have anything out there that looks native, that's native, that looks like this. So anything that looks like this at all, just give me a call and I'll come out and check them out. And for a sense of scale, if you look on that photo on the left, you can see those are some quagga muscles encrusting a boat prop that's been sitting in a water body that is infested with muscles. And then here again is a point for ecologic harm, environmental harm, where these, these muscles have basically colonized this crayfish and suffocated it to death. So we're going to go through some biology basics here. Each individual muscle can live about three to five years. And during that time, they make a lot of babies. Not all the babies survive. In fact, they have very low survivability, but they make up for that by having millions and millions and millions of babies. And the juveniles they make are called platonic or they're free. And there's a photo of it down there on the bottom right and they're called villagers. So basically the adults are sessal or they're attached to some substrate. And then they release all the gametes and they make babies and they can float in the water. And they can then settle and become adults far away from their parents. And they're very small. And to give you an idea, this one right here is about 120 microns or micrometers. And your hair follicles can be between 100 and 180. And then the adults, they attach by these bismol threads which we have in that photo. And they are very, very strong. Even when they're dead, they're still attached. You got to scrape them off. It takes a lot of energy. And to answer a question we get a lot is these are not a preferred food for any North American fish. All right, these are tiny. They're not made of good yummy stuff. These aren't the muscles that you think of when you get your, you know, your Thai curry bowl or something like that. And the fish also agree with that. They're not good. They're not a food source for any organisms in North America. And because of their small juveniles characteristics, we have specialized monitoring tools. And so we partner with California Department Fish and Wildlife. They do the lab analysis for us. And we go out in the lakes and we use this net. You can see here on the left, it's called a tow. And so we'll sample these lakes. We sample Clear Lake about four times a year, about 16 different spots. We sample Blue Lakes and we're going to start sampling Indian Valley this year as well. And if you're interested in how we do this, we have a video on our Facebook. And we actually do the whole tow process and we talk about what we're doing. Now for the adults, we, because they settle on substrates like this photo on the bottom right, we have these plates that we put out on infrastructure like piers, docks, other things. And every month we go out and we check them. So if we have adult muscles in our lake, they're going to be settled on these plates. And so we'll know that right away. And then I did say that there is no native species that looks similar to this and that is true. However, we have two other non-native species out there. So New Zealand mud snail, they're very small. They have this twisted shell. They look very, very snail-like. And those are in the Pewter Creek watershed. And then Asian clams, which we do have in Clear Lake, very clam-like. And they have ridges, ridges or striations. They do not have any stripes however. But these are the things that I get called on the most to go out and check. And we see them on the shores, but we see the clams on the shores of Clear Lake throughout the spring and summer sometimes. All right, into our next section. Where do these muscles come from? Right? Where do they originate from? So if you look at this aerial image, this is the Black Sea. And if you look along the top up here, um, this is the Ukraine side, especially this fresh water, this like green area right here. That is where these muscles originate from. And when you look at aerial images of Clear Lake, it looks just like this. It's very similar. So both of these water bodies are cloudy turbid. They have high pH. They have high calcium and they have a lot of algae. So if quagga muscles or zebra muscles were introduced into Clear Lake, they would find a very happy home, particularly also with the climate. So if we look at this map on the top left, and I apologize if it's small, you can see the Black Sea in red. And if you were to draw a line across the latitude, straight across to North America, guess what? Perfect situation here for the Great Lakes all the way to Northern California. So well, how did they get to the US from the Black Sea through shipping channels? And so this is a map that shows shipping routes. And if you look at all of the yellow lines, that's shipping routes that are greater than 5,000 times journeys. Shipping journeys more than 5,000 times just in one single year. So if we can imagine the Black Sea here and I've outlined it in black. And then we can imagine all those yellow lines are shipping journeys. There must have been a ship that was in the Black Sea that picked up some water in its ballast tank, made that journey all the way across to North America and then entered into the Great Lakes from the St. Lawrence Seaway, which I also outlined in black here. And so this is the St. Lawrence Seaway. And if you've never been over there by Niagara Falls and that area, what you have to know is that all the Great Lakes area is higher elevation than of course the ocean seaway. But in order to get ships in there, they had to do some real heavy engineering. And they created this complex system of locks and channels. So what happens is ships will go into these locks and they'll get put into the right elevation so that they can get over all those rapids and places like Niagara Falls. At each time they go through here, they pick up water, they release water from their ballast in order to balance their load. And so you can imagine what happened is if a ship picked up water in the Black Sea with some muscles in it and then they get to port, let's say Duluth or Chicago, and they release some of that ballast water, out comes some of those invasive species. And that would be zebra muscles, quagga muscles, and there's sea lamprey out there in the Great Lakes right now too that came from the ocean. And then of course, we know that places like Lake Erie, Lake Michigan, they are fishermen's paradise. Fishers love to go fishing out there in these Great Lakes. And so what we probably had is we had a boater out there that went fishing, had some water in their boat and then decided to go westward and go fishing somewhere else. And so that's how muscles got spread across the country. And this is exactly what happened. And so what we have is if you look at the top left, 1986, we had two observations of muscles in Lake Erie. 1990, that's only four years later, we see them all over the Great Lakes region. Three years later in 1993, we're on the bottom left here, they spread all throughout the Mississippi Basin. And then today we have them in the western area of the United States. They made it over the Rockies. All right, so if you look at this map here, this present day map, and we compare that with this map, this is locations where boaters were first before they came to visit Clear Lake. So when they come into Clear Lake, they have to get a muscle sticker and they have to write on their water body they were in last. And that's where we got this data from. And it is 2018. I didn't use 2020 data because that was a weird funky year. And so this is the year where we have the most complete data here. And so when you look at this map, where boats were last before they came to Clear Lake and compare it with this map, which is all the locations that have quagga or zebra muscles, you can see that there's some areas of overlap, right? So it's very concerning for me as I'm managing this lake and managing this program. And it's really important then that we have this prevention program here on Clear Lake. And this is photo is a prime example. So as we move into our next section for our prevention program, this is showing one of the jump offs from one of the larger tournaments going out of our Canakai Vista Casino here. And you can see there's several hundred boats that are ready to start their tournament and they come from all over the country. And so it's really important that we have this prevention program and we make sure that all of these boats that are coming here from all over are muscle-free and they're, they're ready to go. So if you have any questions, this is our website. It's www.nomussels.com. And we have lots of information on here for someone that lives here that just wants to know about our program. Or if you're coming from out of county, you want to go fishing, you want to know, you know, where to get a sticker. It's all right here in this website. So for example, maybe you want to read our plan, see how we're doing or look at our reports. What we do every year, we fight, we write a report and we post it on there. You would go to this prevention plans and reports tab. Let's say you have a friend that's coming in to go fishing and they need to get a sticker for their boat. You can go to the screening location tab and there's a link on there for a sheet that looks like this. And this lists all the places in our county where you can go and you can get a screening and then you can buy a sticker. And let's say you don't really know if you need to be going to the Oaks or Lakeport. You're not familiar with the area. We also have this map here. So what you can do is if you know where your like Airbnb is or where your resort is you're staying or your friend's house, you know the closest location to get a sticker, you can click on that and it can give you directions right on your phone and you can go there and get yourself a sticker. Okay, so I was talking a lot about screening and stickers and getting your boats, you know, make sure they're ready to go and launch. I'm just going to back up a second so we can all be clear on what all these things are. And we're going to go through a couple of scenarios. We're going to go through two scenarios that actually walk through the process of how we do screenings and how we, we, we give stickers to voters, how we sell stickers to voters. So here's Bob the boater. He lives in La Serna. He only launches his boat at the Oaks. Bob goes to a local bait and tackle store to get a quagga muscle sticker. He has to fill out what's called a screening form. And then the screener who is trained, we train all our screeners to look at the form. The screener verifies Bob's boat's residence. So the screener wants to make sure he knows where Bob's boat live. So they look at the California, the registration paperwork to make sure that boat is registered here in Lake County. And so the screener looks that over. They ask Bob a few questions. They verify Bob's boat as low risk. So then the screener can sell Bob a resident sticker. This is what it looks like. It's maroon and kind of gold. And then the resident sticker has the year on it. And these stickers are $20 and they're valid for a whole calendar year. And no inspection is needed for this boat because it has not been in quagga muscle waters, right? It's low risk. If it's only in Clear Lake, Clear Lake has no quagga muscles. It doesn't need an inspection. Okay, we're going to compare this with scenario two. So this is Jet Sea Santa, Jet Ski Santa. And he was just in a jet ski competition in Lake Castaic, which is in Los Angeles County. And Lake Castaic is connected to lakes with muscles. All right, so it's on the list of high-risk lakes. Santa goes to a bait and tackle store, fills out a screener form. The screener looks over the information right away. The screener checks its list. Lake Castaic is high-risk, so the screener deems that boat or that jet ski high-risk. So the screener calls a Water Resources Department Inspector. And inspections are free and a inspector will come out and look at the boat. Now I know this is not a jet ski boat. This is a bass boat and this is not Santa. But here you can see an inspector is looking this boat over. They're making sure that there's no adult muscles, there's no water. And in general, the boat is clean, drained and dry and safe to go into Clear Lake and muscle-free. So Santa's jet ski passes the boat inspection. There's no adult muscles. There's no water on that vessel. So the inspector then can tell the screener, go ahead. He has a little form. He verifies that boat's good to go. The screener can sell Santa a sticker. All visitor stickers cost $20 and they're good for one calendar month. So here you have a sticker that's good for July. Now there's a little bit of overlap month to month, but basically if you're here for four weeks and you're in July and then August, you have to go back and get another August sticker. So we know that that sticker is safe. Or if you're here in July, maybe you come back in September, you're going to have to get that September sticker. All right, so now I just want to reiterate that the sticker program works and here is why it works so well. It's confirmation and communication. All right? We all know what a safe muscle-free boat is and which boat is not safe or muscle-free, right? That sticker is a great way to communicate with everybody that can see that boat, that that boat went through screening and is verified safe to launch in Lake County. Stickers provide money for the economy and for lake protection. So every $20 a sticker, 13 of that goes towards the county to maintain this program. $7 of that sticker sale goes to that screener, that bait and tackle store, that hardware store, or that vendor that's selling that sticker. And I will say that all of our vendors are local businesses. We don't have any chains too. We do not have ramp or launch fees at Clear Lake. All right? We have about 11 or 12 public access points, but we have over 400 access points on the lake. It's very difficult for us to have any sort of ramp or launch fee program. So this is the only way that we can make money to support our program, to support the prevention, muscle prevention program. And the goal is to get these boaters to comply, right? We have to make this process easy. We have to make it fast. They get here. They may drive five days to get here, but they want to get on the water right away. They want to start fishing. And then we have to make it affordable, right? So if we make too many hurdles, we make it too complicated, too many forms, we make it too expensive or we make it take too long, too cumbersome, they're going to bypass the whole thing and they're going to go straight in the lake. And that is not what we want. So the big complaint we get a lot is why am I spending $20 on this sticker? I don't even know what it goes for. So what we did this year with help from Civic Spark, intern we have in our office, is we made this awesome outreach tool that we're going to distribute to all of our vendors. And what it does is it breaks down what that $20 is actually going for, is going towards, right? So out of this $20, we talked about $7 goes towards the local business that's selling that sticker. About $5.80 of that $20 goes towards grant support and match. So yes, we get grants, but we do have to put in some in order to get a lot back. We do have staff that exceed the grant funds we get. So about $4.40 goes towards funding those ramp monitor staff. About $1.80 goes towards outreach, supplies, materials. And then only $1 of that $20 goes towards our overhead, our admin, keeping the lights on, keeping those trucks running, doing the paperwork to make sure that we can keep this program going. All right, so now we're going to go into the next section, which is impacts to ecology and economy if we got muscles introduced into Clear Lake. And then this is basically all about the food web. So when we look at this illustration here, we have phytoplankton. These are green algae, not cyanobacteria, but green algae, fish food here on the right. Those guys are eaten by what's called zooplankton. The zooplankton are the food for our little minnows or our bait fish, think shad, even the hitch, that's what they eat. And then our game fish like bass and crappie, those are eating all those little minnow fish. All right, so this is the food web and this is why Clear Lake is such a world-class fishing destination because we have a very healthy food web here. And so this is a close-up of some zebra muscles. They're filter feeding. They're quagga muscles. I apologize. And what they do is they take in that food or that phytoplankton, that green algae, and then they dispel, excrete dissolved nutrients. And for this series of slides, I'm going to use information that was generated from the Lake Michigan research, Lake Michigan research, because they've been studying the impacts of muscles on lake food webs since they were introduced into Lake Michigan in the 1990s. And particularly this is information from Dr. Harvey Bootsma at University of Wisconsin. So each one of these muscles is able to filter a half to three liters of water every day. And they're consuming all of that green algae, all that phytoplankton that's in that water. They're basically right now clearing Lake Michigan of the very smallest plants that form the base of the food web. So this is that food for that very, that base, the foundation of the food web, and the muscles are totally eating all of it. And this is a whole then is affecting the entire fishery because the amount of energy that's available for the fish has been reduced. And what they're seeing is in certain areas, that food is completely gone or it's being transformed into a different form that's not usable as fish food. And then another thing that we get a lot, we hear a lot is, oh, let's just get muscles and they'll clear up the water and then we'll have great clear water. And that's not necessarily true, particularly we're talking about cyanobacteria. So research has shown, and they wrote a whole book chapter about it, that muscles do not like cyanobacteria or what we call blue-green algae. They really dislike it and they're going to eat everything else first. So actually what they're going to do is they're going to eat all the good fish food, that green algae. And they're going to spit out those microcysts or that cyanobacteria. And what we're going to have is basically more cyanobacteria and less of the valuable green algae or fish food. And so this is what we can expect our system to look like if we get quagga muscles or zebra muscles. And this is called a double whammy. So what you're doing is you are removing that green algae or that phytoplankton from the water column, which might make the water clearer, but what you're going to get is more dissolved nutrients at the bottom of the lake. And that's going to then lead to growth of bentic algae. And that's what the bottom of the lake is going to look like. You're not going to have those rich plant beds where fish like to be. You're not going to have that food base out there in the water column for our valuable fishery. So this is really important because when we look at our lake and our economy, it's all driven by these game fish and fish that are out in the water column. They're in, they're not eating food from the bottom of the lake. They're eating those food, those minnow fish and those bait fish that are out there in the water column. So this is that connection between the ecological impacts, if we get muscles, to the economic impacts. And it's why this program is so very important. So Lake County relies on more than a million dollars, just an annual fishing dollars. So this is resident and non-resident. People come from all over to come here and go fish. When they're fishing for a tournament, or let's say they're just, they're coming to fish for a weekend, they sometimes can come for a week, like if they're coming for a tournament to pre-fish. During that time, they're staying in resorts, they're staying in hotels, they're eating at restaurants, they're going to the grocery store. They're bringing their dollars here to spend in our community and it's all be driven by a healthy fishery. And I'm going to give you some sticker sale numbers now. And so if we lose the sticker program, which is a prevention program, we're going to see the loss of some of these funds. So what we have here is over five years, we have both the sticker revenue for private business as well as county business. And I like to show five years because if we just looked at any one year, right, in our county, there's something crazy going on. We have floods, we got fires, we got a pandemic. So I like to look at these five-year chunks. And so the blue is our business revenue, the greens, the county revenue. And what we can see is over the five-year period, private businesses brought in half a million dollars just from sticker sales for this program. The county brought in almost a million dollars. Now that million dollars goes back into our program. We basically break even. So we're spending that million dollars back into support this program. Now let's look at the same data. It's just a little different. We're looking at it a little differently. So this is muscle sticker sales by type, whether they're residents or they're visitors. And the main thing I want to show you here is when you look at the, the dark red is the visitor. The resident is the lighter red is over this five-year period, visitors brought in $790,000 just for the sticker sales. So these are dollars that are coming from out of county, coming into our county just to buy stickers here. And the average per year is that is about 150 or so, a little, a little more, 160. Okay, the last graph I'll show you guys. This is the money that we've brought in through our grants. So again, this is a prevention program. And if we get muscles in our lake, we are no longer eligible for this money. The state currently does not have funds for if you get muscles in your lake. They only have funds for preventing muscles from getting into your lake. So what this is showing is, and I have five year, but I just realized that it's only 2017 to 2021 because that's when our grant fund periods were. But the main thing I want to show you is that big blue part of that pie chart is a million dollars goes to our ramp monitors funding. So we have about 13 to 15 staff for ramp monitors every year. And so that is grant dollars that's coming outside of the county from this grant program, going to pay for these ramp monitors and they live here. They're spending that money here. They have those jobs. They're spending that money here. So I just, I just want to reiterate that it's really important that we keep muscles out of our lake or else we could see all of these gains will then turn to losses. So there's other costs associated if we get muscles. There's high impacts to drinking water costs. So what this is, this is a study from a water body that has drinking water intakes and has zebra muscles. And so what they did is they categorized all of their costs associated with being able to provide drinking water, even though they're in an infested water body. And the red's a little hard to see. If you look at the bottom, so depending on the size of the facility. So if you're pumping a million gallons per day, you're looking at about $100,000 a year mean for maintaining your system with muscles. If you're looking at about a 10 million gallon or 11 million gallon, probably did it, a million gallons per day system, you're looking about 500,000, half a million dollars to just maintain your water, your drinking water treatment when you get muscles. And this information we have from reports done on federal infrastructure in 2018. And so when they looked at the maintenance fees for mitigating muscles on Hoover, Davis and Parker dams, it was over $6 million just in one single year for, like we saw earlier, that dam infrastructure with all those muscles, they had to scrape off. The other things to consider that kind of have, are priceless, right? They, there's no pricing associated with them. But muscles in a system can cause smells, bacteria, decay, even during, even when treated. And this requires constant cleaning and treatment for this mitigation. You don't just clean it once or treat it once. It's something you have to do quarterly, monthly, all the time. And that's including those filters and the pipes. Maybe you're adding some additional treatment to kind of combat some of those smell or bacteria. And I would think that this money might be passed down to the consumer. And this is really concerning because we have 17 drinking water systems here on Clear Lake. And they serve over, you know, 60% drinking water to the residents here in Lake County. So my question is if we get muscles, can we afford that? Can our drinking utility water systems purveyors, can they afford that maintenance? Can our consumers afford that? Now, I didn't mean to be gloom and doom. I'm really, you know, let's take a breath. Let's not freak out. It's a lot of information. But we are taking steps to improve this program and to date, this program has worked. So I just want to go through some of those things right now. We have some goals for the next couple of years. So one of them is we really want to go digital with our screener system, right? Right now it's on this honor system. Boaters tell us where they were. We ask them some questions to make sure, you know, their story's straight and we could figure out, you know, where exactly they were. If we have any doubts, we call an inspector. We get that boat inspected. But what we really want to do is have these digital systems where we can just put in the boater registration number and we know exactly where that boat has been. And we've started this process. So we have some tablets already and we're starting that process for this year to incorporate that in. We want to improve road and ramp signage, right? So we want to get improved signage on our highways, at all our private access points, at all of these resorts, as well as any of our HOA locations. We want to make it very, very difficult for somebody to get in the lake and say, I didn't know I was supposed to get a sticker. That's what we want to avoid. So if we can inundate and have those signage everywhere, we make it very clear that it's against the law to enter our lake without a sticker, without a Lake County sticker. And of course, I'm always looking for more funding for this. I want to, the next point is boosting capacity of the program. We are at the capacity for what funds we have. Every year, we ask for Every year, we ask for a grant of the maximum amount and every year we get it. We have the sticker fee, we're using all of that sticker money that we, that revenue that we bring in, and then some, we're actually pulling from the department a little bit. So it's really important that we get more funding. If we want to improve and expand this program, we need more funding sources. We also just have to boost the capacity. We need more monitors, we need more staff to cover more areas. There is one way that we've been able to boost capacity and that's have a boost efficiency a little bit with the program. So last year, we incorporated some muscle dogs. And we're doing that again this year as well as next year. And so muscle dogs can do a boat inspection in about 30 seconds. And what that does, especially during those really busy holidays, those really busy weekends where we get, you know, 50 boats lined up and ready to go on the ramp, is it frees up a lot of time for those ramp monitors to check boats in, make sure their stickers are valid, answer questions while those muscle dogs are doing those inspections. So we really love muscle dogs, but they are expensive. We have them covered right now in a grant and we continue doing that. But it'd be great if we can expand this part of the program as well as other parts of the program. Oh, there's Gil again, he's the muscle sniffing dog. They're super cute. Okay, this is our last section. And this is what you can do to help. And this is geared both for the public as well as to the board of supervisors. So some things that you can do as the public is make sure you get your sticker. Make sure your friends get their sticker. Make sure everybody in your family has their stickers on every single boat or jet ski, sailboat. Another thing you can do is just know about the program, be able to explain it to people. So if you're listening today, you learned a lot about the program, right? Go to our website, www.nomussels.com, learn about it, learn what it's about, learn why it's important. Whenever you're at any water body, not just Clear Lake, you want to look at all the signage. You want to be aware of, does this lake have mussels? Does it not have mussels? What other invasives does it have? And then the best thing you can do, and everybody can do, and it's free, is to clean drain dry all the time, every time. When you leave any lake, any water body, no matter what it is, it's your bait gear, your fishing gear, it's your tubes, your floaty tubes, your floaty toys, anything, you make sure it's all clean, drained, dry every time. Now for the board of supervisors, some things you can do to help us is of course prioritize lake programs and projects. If we have priority on these things with the support that you can provide for that, it makes it easier for us to then expand and enhance and make a lot of these existing programs work a lot more efficiently and effectively. And you guys are great, you always offer, you always do letters of support for us. Every grant you guys have always approved all that and we really appreciate it. And just in general, boosting capacity. If we have more staff, we can do more, we can think out of the box. If we have more perspectives on things, we can think out of the box and we can get more ideas on how we can improve our programs. And then of course, making sure every boat has a sticker. I'm hoping after today, no matter where you are, maybe you're getting brunch or walking down by a library park, if you see a boat go by, you're going to be looking for that sticker. And so these are all things that both the public and the board of supervisors can do to help us. So thank you so much for the time today. I'll take any questions now. I do want to reiterate that if you have, if you want to look up what we're doing, go to www.nomussels.com. You can always email me if you have questions or you see a boat without a sticker, you know, you can call Marine Patrol, you can call me. And I also want to say that we are hiring two ramp monitors for this season, willing to work up to 25 hours a week. You can go to the HR website at Lake County. We, we really need some additional monitors for this program. And then of course, check us out on our Facebook. We have some really cool videos and resources there. You can also direct message us if you have a question or you see a boat without a sticker or something on Facebook and we can reply pretty quickly. So thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
I was muted. Thank you very much for your presentation today. Any questions or comments from board members? And let's go ahead and get rid of the presentation. There it is, thank you so much. Supervisor Scott.
Thank you for the presentation. And I'll just have to say, I had a chance last year to go down and see the dogs in action. That was pretty impressive. And then they showed me where they actually had a sock where there was a muscle in it and they hit it on the boat, so I could see how the dog would, would find it. So if anybody has a chance to go see those dogs work, it was, it was, it was neat to watch. So thank you for this and I definitely support this program. And, you know, we need to do everything we possibly can to keep mussels out of our lake.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor, Supervisor Pyska.
Thank you for this presentation. I always love learning about this. Do you still have the boat, that the demonstration boat with the mussels on it? I had such a good time with my kids checking that out. And I think it came from Lake Mead. So that's a great learning tool for students and, you know, and other places where people are gathering when we can do that. So definitely a supporter of this program and, you know, support your work trying to keep our lake clean.
Thank you. We still have that boat, it's at our partners down in Sonoma or Solano County. And we share that, we share it with them. And we've been keeping it kind of, it's taking a break because of COVID. It's very tactile, so you know, and this is over, we'll bring it out again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members?
Yeah. Angela, thank you very much for the presentation. As you look at these, you know, I think the sticker program obviously supported some of the board. It's a great one. But I have once, a couple of questions. One would be, where exactly, and maybe you went over this in a report and I missed it, where exactly on the boat is the sticker located?
Yes, thank you, Mo, for that question. I did not show that diagram. But the sticker should be located at the bow, which is the front of the boat, on the left and right side, port and starboard, right next to, ideally right next to their registration number and their registration sticker. And then they get three stickers for every $20. The third sticker goes at the back of the trailer. So we do check and the way that we check that people are complying is we drive very slowly through parking lots and we look at the back of the trailers and they're supposed to have their stickers there. If they don't have a sticker visible, we get out, we search the trailer. And then if they don't have it, we give them a warning card. But we come back and we check and we take notes. And if they do it again, then they get a citation. Should I answer your question?
Yeah, definitely. And you know, I know our local fishermen, you know, all of our locals are always know what they're looking for. I just want to make sure that, you said where those stickers should be and where it should be looking at. But somewhere else and you might have somebody trying to do something that they shouldn't do. So I just wanted you to explain that to our community, because I know all eyes are probably watching. The other question I have about capacity building and, you know, you find this controversial, but I'm going to say it. You know, I think that our rates for our locals should always be lower than our out-of-town guests that we're hosting here, you know. So, you know, I always think that the folks coming in from out of area should pay a little bit more for their sticker to help with the program to build the capacity. Ultimately, it's capacity building. It allows us to keep everything beautiful for ourselves, but also gives them a great, you know, place to come and fish, some of the best bass fishing in the area. So, you know, I myself as a supervisor would, yeah, I would support two different rates. One for out of county, our visitors that have helped pay to keep our beautiful in, in, you know, in-county fishers in place and our beautiful resource protected a little more. So just throwing it out there.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you Angela for that presentation. I always enjoy your presentations.
I, I will say that right now, there probably is a different rate for the fact that one is for only a month and the other one is for the calendar. So it's definitely a different level of cost for those coming in from the outside. But at the same time, most other lakes that you would go to does have a ramp fee. And we don't. And so that's a pricing point that we might be able to look at to see what is the difference between those having to pay a ramp fee versus not? And how does it compare to the muscle sticker program that we're asking them to follow through with? I know that I, I, I'm always nervous about mussels for the fact that are drinking water. And I think that's, that's the main reason for me, more so, I mean, recreation has a huge economic impact. But the fact is that people, their sustenance coming from the lake itself for so many of our people, and that's really important that we don't mess up the infrastructure in order to get that water to people's faucets and homes. So that, that to me is a real important part. I, I'm, I'm open for any further conversation as to how it is that we can enhance the program. I think that we would have, fires would be nothing in comparison to the world of hurt we would have if we had mussels all over our lake. And I think that once they're in a lake, getting rid of them is fairly very difficult. So definitely.
Hasn't happened yet to date. No one's been able to get rid of mussels once they've been introduced.
Right. And so I think that if there's ever a further conversation to look at how to better fund the program, absolutely open for those types of conversations. Any further comments before we open it up for the public?
Just want to point out how Boy Scott DeLeon, you have quite a staff in Water Resources and how lucky you are. I mean, just the two presentations we've seen today. I mean, they just, you can tell, they're passionate about what they do. They, they know what they're talking about, they can answer their questions. And it's just, it's just a breath of fresh air. And just want to congratulate you on this staff. They are absolutely amazing.
I'm going to add that, I was thinking the same thing during both presentations. You got some amazing women working for you.
I, I absolutely do. I thank you so much for acknowledging them. They, they are both amazing and, and they are the tip of the iceberg here on Water Resources. Every staff member here has the same passion and enthusiasm for the work that they do, whether it's groundwater, invasive species. Any program that we have, we have folks here that share that same, that same enthusiasm. And yes, they are, they're, they're a treat to, to be associated with. And it's, it's, it's hard to not, it's hard to not have a good day when you come to work and you're surrounded by the people that have such great attitudes and great enthusiasm. But thank you for acknowledging them, because they are very special and, and extremely valued here.
Thank you. All right Jake, let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room and see if we have any public comments or questions on the zebra quagga mussels program.
All right, I've sent a unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Let's start with.
This is Bart Levinson. Thank you so much for that amazing presentation. I heard you on the radio on Sunday saying that surrounding our area, all of the other sports fishing lakes would not be having fishing tournaments. And that only Clear Lake, Lake County would be hosting fishing tournaments this year. So if I heard that correctly, could you please say a bit more to that to everybody present so that we can understand what to expect for this coming season?
Yes, thank you for that question Bart. Yeah, so to clarify, her question was asking about fishing tournaments and neighboring lakes or the surrounding area within the region. And at this point, you know, Lake Mendocino is not accessible by boat, so they're not having fishing tournaments. Lake Barriessa is managed by Bureau of Locomation and they are not issuing permits right now. I'm sure you remember they had a really bad fire last year. They're still kind of doing some cleanup. They have some ramps open and they, they have some activity going on, but they don't want large tournaments there yet at this point in time. That might change later in the season. When I'm looking at my tournament schedule, and this kind of goes to Mo's point about having those visitor stickers be more money, is that we have repetitive tournaments. So we'll have one, love a series, a tournament series, and they're coming to Clear Lake three times this year, four times this year, when normally they might have gone to another regional water body like Barriessa. Lake Orville is still having some tournaments. But yeah, we're getting a lot of that attention. The other thing about that is we just had a record-breaking fish catch. I don't know if you saw that, but we got a really large crappie that was caught, 4.5 pounds. So people are trying to beat that record. So they're going to be coming from all over to try to get a bigger crappie, as well as our lake, most recently, last year being voted the number one bass fishing lake in the country. And I also think we're going to see increased traffic, because people are sick of being at home. They want to get out, they want to go see, you know, what's going on, they want to travel. They feel safer to travel. And so I think we're going to see all of those things combined. And it's going to be a very crazy year. So keep your eyes out for those stickers on boats.
Very much.
Thank you. And I was so glad that Mo Simon asked about where we should look to see the stickers. I'm wondering if you could put something in the local papers so that the public can help you. If we see something, say something.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. I saw Melissa Fulton had her hand up.
Yes, thank you. Melissa Fulton with the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. And back when this entire program started, I was fortunate to be with the group that worked on the program. And, and it's wonderful to see how the program has evolved. We know how important it is. And I certainly echo the comments of our supervisors in applauding Scott for finding these two people. I don't know where you found them, but for Pete's sake, train them to their desks. Don't let them go. Because this is truly what we need. And this program, the importance of this program cannot be overstated by any means. Those of us who've been involved with it for years know how bad it would be if we were ever to get the mussels here. So thank you and keep up the good work. And we'll see if we can't help you find more money.
I'm sure Director DeLeon will translate the chain to your desk to a more appropriate term.
No, that is what it is.
But we understand, we understand. So thank you for the comment. Any further comments Jake in the Zoom room?
I have sent another unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, that looks to be the end of our public comment. Let's bring it back to the board. Any further comments before we go ahead and close up this item? Ms. Dow, thank you so much for your enthusiasm and your passion for the lake. I don't know if I can ask you to be more excited about what you do, but I've seen your videos and you're always excited about what you do. So thank you for caring for what we think as one of our most cherished treasure, our lake. It does drive our economy and it does provide for a lot of respite for many reasons.
Thank you so much, thanks for having me.
Yeah, I would like to make one last comment too. Angela's also started attending the Risk Reduction Authority meetings, because as we talk about fire and rehabilitation, that is, you know, also goes right into what we're talking about with fire present, prevention and, you know, aftermath here locally, which affects our water bodies. So appreciate that, you know, her attendance there, so thank you Angela.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.